Okay, we're gonna call to order a meeting of the OCAM zoning board of appeals. It is six o'clock. This meeting is being recorded. So just to notice everyone here, we do have some participants on Zoom joining us as well as one of our board members, Anthony La Range. Okay.
Introduce yourself.
So my name is Carl Lindley. I am the chairman of the OCAM zoning board of appeals. We'll ask the other members to identify themselves for the record as well.
I'm Lucy Test now. I'm clerk of the board. I'm an alternate member.
Anthony La Range, I am an alternate member.
Okay, excellent. So tonight we have on our agenda an application for variance and we're going to ask the clerk to read the legal notice that was published in the Barry Gazette.
Notice of public hearing, the OCAM zoning board of appeals will hold a regular business meeting Thursday, February 1st, 2021, in Memorial Hall, OCAM Town Hall, to Colbrook Road, OCAM, Mass. There will be a public hearing scheduled on the following items, starting at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as can be heard. Variance owner applicant Calvin Chandonay and Bridget Chandonay. Location, 29 New Braintree Road, OCAM's assessment map, 406 lot 176. The applicants are requesting a variance from chapter 14, sections 5.6.2, 5.6.4, and 6.5 of the OCAM zoning bylaw setback requirements of the OCAM zoning bylaw sideline setback to build a garage on a non-conforming lot. The applicants may bring all pertinent information and plans with them and may bring a consultant and/or attorney to answer questions and to represent them at the hearing. Interested parties may review the application by calling 508-882-3358 and making an appointment to view at the town hall. Signed, Lucy Alex Test now clerk for the OCAM zoning board of appeals.
Having read the legal notice, I the building commissioner has, as a part of this process, issued a denial. That denial, we'll enter that into the record. We're going to read that into the record now, if the clerk could do so.
Yes, sir, I have reviewed your building permit application for 29 New Braintree Road, map 406 parcel 176, and reviewed the proposed building plan. And my findings are as follows. Your proposed garage does not meet the setbacks as required by section 5.3 lot line regulations. No structure shall be erected within 50 feet of the sideline of an abutting lot, nor 50 feet from the front of lot line. Therefore, your request to construct a freestanding garage is denied. You may however, appeal this decision to the zoning board of appeals. Please make a copy of this letter to the town clerk's office, where you can obtain the information to appeal this denial. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact my office. With regards, Robert Lenciani, building commissioner.
Excellent, thank you, Madam Clerk. Finally, it was contained within the denial letter, but the just for the record, the general bylaw that's implicated by this proposed project is section 5.3 lot line regulations, which state no structure shall be erected within 50 feet of the sideline of an abutting lot, nor 50 feet from the front lot. So we'll begin, I just want to kind of set everybody's expectations on how I'm going to run the meeting and how we'll handle this. First, we're going to allow the homeowner to make his presentation, to make their presentation to the board. And we'll hear from them first. The standard that we're as a board going to judge whether the variance should or should not be allowed, there's three requirements that the board will need to find if we're going to allow the variance. The first finding is that owing to the circumstances that are related to soil conditions, shape or topography of the land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structure, but not generally affecting the zoning district in which it is located. Two, that there's some hardship. A literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance or bylaw would invoke substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. And then finding number three regarding the public good. The desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the ordinance or the bylaw. After the homeowner has had a chance to make his presentation, we'll open it up and allow any abutters or anyone with any comment.
Just to make a note for the record.
To do this, yes.
Certified mail was sent out to all the abutters. There were 16 of them and we received almost all the cards back. We just got another one back that they had received it.
Okay. Did we receive any written correspondence from anyone? Received one, okay, so we'll
This was just presented to me at the very, very beginning.
Okay, we'll review that correspondence from an abutter at the appropriate time after we hear from those that are present here today. After we've heard from everyone, then what we will do is we will close that portion of the meeting. At that point, only the three members of the board will be able to discuss and to deliberate a decision amongst ourselves. At that point, we're not going to be able to hear from you any further. So if there's something that you want to say, that's the time for it. Then comes the time for us to deliberate based on everything that we've heard. We can't hear more. So at that point, it's the evidence, if you will, is closed. And we will discuss amongst ourselves, based on the evidence that we've heard, whether or not to grant the variance, to deny the variance, or we may continue it if we think that some other action might be appropriate, such as going to the location to view it, if there's some questions in the board's mind, or perhaps seeking an opinion of town council as to whether to, how to proceed. All right, so without further ado, I will open it up to hear from the homeowner.
Appreciate it. Good evening, board, and good evening, everybody. My name is Calvin Chandonet. I live here at 29 New Braintree. Can everybody hear me? Hopefully, we lost everybody. All right. Perfect. Does everyone want a copy? Does everyone want, yes, would you like a copy? Can pass one down.
I have some extra copies here also.
Excellent.
You sent us quite a few.
Better safe than sorry. It said something about the effect of 20. And you figure with all the abutters that we have too.
That
So you figure better safe than sorry.
Yes.
So without further ado, I live at 29 New Braintree Road. I haven't really been in town long. Some of you I know, some of you I'm meeting for the first time. This is my wife, Bridget. So we are here today. I am trying to put a variance in for the non-conforming lot for the structure at 29 New Braintree Road. This is a two-car garage. If you refer to the packet, you can see the everything in here. You can even see a 3D rendering looking for 24 by 25. This is not a business. I work full-time as an MRI tech. My wife is a nurse. We're not doing any kind of automotive work. It's just for the sole purpose of keeping my brand-new tractor nice as long as I can and my pickup truck stored away as long as I can and keep it nice and clean. As you all know, vehicles are expensive, tractors are expensive. Everything's expensive nowadays. I just want to keep things clean as long as I can. And out of the elements, I'm very meticulous, even with my house. As some of you noticed, my house has changed some colors in the last couple of years. Painted it myself. We've done a lot of work to the house. And we're very meticulous about our things and want to keep things nice. Like I said, it's just nothing more than a storage piece. So we're just trying to keep it, everything out of the elements, if you will. Unfortunately, where I park everything now, it's kind of muddy and I have to access my pickup truck. In fact, I just had to drive it today and it's quite tore up in the position where it is, where I want to put the garage. I know that its setback laws is 50 feet. When my house was built in 59, it was nothing more than a postage stamp. And where the house is, where the house was, and it was with the laws of the day. So with the time changing around the turn of the century, I know that things change in the town. They wanted three acres to build new when the setbacks were changed to 50 feet. However, while I do have a nice juicy piece of property, as you can see from the zoning map provided, there is problems with that as well. Directly behind my house, 60 feet in from the road, I have a septic tank. So unfortunately, 60 feet in from the road, I have a septic tank just behind my house. That's 20 feet back from the house and another 20 feet beyond, that's my leach field. However, I can't build from the other side of the septic tank because I don't have 50 feet coming from the other side. So I'm kind of limited there. I could build beyond that, but I need another 10 feet to put a foundation for a concrete building first, for a structure, for to put a concrete slab down. We're actually looking to put a four-inch-thick slab down for my structure, for it to be sitting on. This is a steel structure. It'll go up in about a day and a half. Approval will come in and they'll put up, there should be no remnants, anything left over. Kind of like an erector set kit is what we're assembling here. Unfortunately, what happens beyond that, the septic tank and the leach field, so I have to go 10 feet beyond that, it's a nice 20-degree drop-off to the bottom. So unfortunately, I have quite a distance ways going down to the bottom of the hill there. And unfortunately, I don't want to build downhill or excavate a hill because then what's happening is I have quite a bit of runoff at my house. In fact, I just had a sump pump installed the other day. So we have quite a bit of water at our house. So if I tried to build on a hill and underneath a leach field, things aren't going to be good for that building. And then unfortunately, it's going to get corroded and it's going to get rusty. And unfortunately, it's probably going to get overwhelmed by the amount of water. However, I could put it at the bottom, but we start to run into a few issues. At the bottom, it's nothing more than where the water ends up. It's quite swampy. In fact, I dumped a load of dirt there the other day and the tractor almost got stuck. I was down there for about 10 minutes and my tractor's nice and muddy. I can prove that. Unfortunately, the other thing down there, if I should put the garage down there, I would have to build a driveway that's going to be well over 100 feet. Unfortunately, that's going to defeat the purpose of this garage and probably make the driveway more expensive than what the actual cost of the garage is going to be, where it's proposed now. I have direct access where it's going to be right now. And the other part that's going to come of it is that another driveway is going to have to be built as access to it. DPW is going to have to have another driveway to worry about come winter time. This is also another driveway I'll have to maintain. It's going to be over about 400 feet from my front door to where that other position would be. The other issue would be that to make that driveway, I'd have to have shade trees cut down. And in the town of OCAM, by law, the tree warder would have to get involved. And this is just another issue that we would have to, would have to deal with, with the town laws and the shade trees going down New Braintree Road. And that's pretty much my long-winded spiel. And that's it. Any, I guess we'll take a seat.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. So we've heard now from the homeowner. Why don't we start with those who are here? If there are abutters who want to speak, either in support of the variance, in opposition of the variance, we're taking no position as to the variance. Whatever you have to say now is your time. So we'll recognize, I'm sorry, I'm sir.
87 Maple Street. I also own the property at 18 New Braintree Road, which is directly across from Calvin and Bridget. And I have absolutely no objections whatsoever. And if they were to have to put in a driveway on the lower side, the amount of water in that hill that would be coming out would be problematic, I think, towards the road and towards the neighbors. The neighbors just down, when they put in their foundation, George Paradise, many years ago, roughly 1972, as soon as they dug the hole, the next foundation was full of water. So
So you're concerned that if you put a driveway in down the way, that the water is going to flow down the driveway at you across the street?
Not so much at me, but maybe towards the road. It would just, to me, it would just be opening a problem. Plus, it's also would be his reserve area for future septic system. You know, if he has a failure in the future, it has to, you know.
Relocate, yeah.
Go move it, whatever, Title V in the future. That's basically that property is his reserve area to
And you're located, you're located directly across the street is one of your lots?
Directly across from his.
And then you said you had another one that's also
At 87 Maple Street.
Okay.
He's right on the corner.
My parents live in my house at 18 New Braintree Road, which is across from Calvin.
Gotcha. Okay.
I brought a letter.
Is this the
This is from his brother Jeffrey, who lives in the house directly across the
Direct the butter on the southeast side. Which would be on Hapgood Road.
Okay, so
Northwest.
All right, so since you raised this letter, I'll just, might as well, it's a quick letter. I'll read it into the record. This is a letter dated February 1st, 2024. It's directed to the OCAM zoning board of appeals. It states, "I have no objection to and support Calvin and Bridget Chandonay's request for a variance to build a garage on the property at 29 New Braintree Road, OCAM, Mass. Signed, Jeffrey R. Brunel." Okay. So, and I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Michael.
Michael.
Brunel.
Michael, any other comments today?
No, I think that
Okay. Is there anybody else present who wishes to speak? Someone in the back?
Yeah, Kevin, 87 New Braintree Road. I have absolutely no issue whatsoever with this. I'm new in town, so it doesn't carry much weight as Michael and Heather me or, you know, family-wise. And, you know, Calvin was talking about a site plan and a lot of things, and it was pretty hard to follow because it's not thinking here, a proposed site plan. He's talking about a, you know, what
I can give you mine.
A page.
Oh, it's like page three?
Yeah, okay. But it's not a proposed site plan with the, where he said the gradages.
There you go.
Okay. Right, well, you were talking an area of something here, something there.
Yeah, so unfortunately, just
I'm not, I'm not, I'm serious. I'm not, I'm not objecting whatsoever, but it's being new, it's tough for me to follow. You're talking this, this, on this line, that, over here. You know, and I understand 100% of it because I'm a mechanical contractor.
Yep.
But I can't visually see it, you know, I'm like, okay, wait a minute, what are we talking about? But I follow the 50-foot setbacks and apparently you have blockage out front. And you'd have to put a driveway in. You know, Mike would know about it because he understands where the driveway is and the rest of this stuff. I'm, you know, I'm totally for that. And I know about runoff and driveways and flooding and areas that are soggy, you know. So basically, I think it's a good deal and I would hope the board would
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Variance.
Thank you.
Going to garage myself, but I have a little bit more
We won't hold that against you. And just for the record, regardless of how long you've been in town, your comments are welcome.
Right across from Peter.
It would have been nice, but I wouldn't answer that. 61.
The train, the trainhouse.
But I saw a nice tractor that Calvin was talking about.
Thank you.
I got a little tractor that I just plow with, but I bought from a farm upstate New York.
All right, anybody else present who wants to make a comment? Going once, twice?
So I do have
Hold on, we're not quite there yet. So is there anyone on Zoom who would like to be heard on this? All right, hearing no response, we will, okay.
I just texted her from
Oh, okay.
I got in the back.
All right. Hi, Shelly, welcome to the meeting.
That's Shelly, okay.
All right. All right, so we've heard now from the homeowner. We've heard from those present, those on Zoom, and from those in writing. The homeowner, you want us to address this again?
If I may enter this in as well, this is from my immediate abutter. This is from Greg next door. This would be the person who would be affected the most.
He's
Yes, he's not here this evening. But even before all of this, I went to Greg next door because he'd be the person affected by it most. This was even in August, before I even went and got a property, before I even got a survey, before I got anything. I talked to Greg and I said to him right away, this is what I want to do. This is my intentions. And he says, "I'm fine with it as long as you stick with it. You're not doing anything otherwise." So we sat down in the middle of January and he signed that there, not being, not opposing.
Right, so I'll read this into the record as well. This is a letter dated Do we have somebody on Zoom wishing to speak?
There's someone with feedback for you.
All right. So this is again, a letter addressed to the OCAM zoning board of appeals, or OCAM zoning board of approvals. I don't know how we got that moniker because we have denied some. But it stated January 17th of 2023. It's
Well, it's probably me being me typing it up.
Okay. "To the OCAM Board of Appeals, my name is Greg Matiros. I am the immediate abutter to Calvin Chandonay at 29 New Braintree Road. It's my understanding that Calvin needs a variance for his project to be approved. I have sat down with Calvin and discussed his intentions of the proposed structure and I have agreed to the terms as follows. The garage shall not be used for a business of any sort and the sole purpose of the structure is to house and store one tractor and one vehicle." Okay. All right, is there anything else that the the homeowner wishes to submit? Okay, anything? Anyone who is present wishes to say? And finally, anything that anyone on Zoom wishes to say? All right, hearing no response, I I would make a motion that we close the evidence as to this as to this variance and that the board can now take up this matter. Would someone like to second that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right. I will I'm happy to hear from any of the other members of the board. If someone has a strong opinion, one way or another, that they want to get off their chest, then we'll open it, as I always do, to you guys to speak first. Otherwise, as always, I have my own opinions. All right, hearing nobody chomping at the bit to speak, I will take the, take the lead. A couple of things that I'll note, I guess, for the record. One is that I will, I guess, as far as the evidence that I have heard in the letters that I received, generally, I credit people who show up to the meeting more than receiving a letter. It's just, and especially, yeah, in this case, I have a letter that's being handed to us by the homeowner from someone purporting to be his neighbor. There's no, and I say that not to cast any aspersions. I don't think there's anything to follow there. But that's why I always credit live testimony, I guess, better than a letter, so-called hearsay testimony. So with that said, I will note that as I and I had taken a look, an aerial look at the property as well, to just get my bearings as to what was going on. And I noted, just as a practical sense as well, I say, I always look and say, well, is there someplace else that this person could put this thing? Are they just, you know, doing this out of, you know, sheer convenience that, hey, maybe this is better? There's no doubt that, when I looked at that, that that's the spot that it makes the most sense and really the only sense to put that garage or to put any structure. But with that said, that's not the standard. That's not, that's not what the law is. I will also note that I did make an, prior to reading your abutters' letter, I had made a note, my note specifically says, "No business use", thinking that if a variance is granted, one of the things that this board can do is we can set certain conditions. And so perhaps the discussion of putting in there that there'll be no commercial activity as a result of this. So as we always do, I like to go back to, you know, those are my gut feelings. I put them on the record for you all to understand how the members of the board, or at least this member of the board is thinking of things. It's kind of my gut reaction. Then second, I want to go to what the law is. And the law says that we have to find some type of finding that due to the soil, the shape or the topography, that this property is somehow different than others in its, others in the area. And I think the homeowner spoke to that. The homeowner spoke. And when we look at the variance proposal, which is in the record, it is a, already a non-conforming lot in which this house, the house structure isn't set back to the, to the standards, I believe, that would be required today. That, that the other things that he spoke of having behind the house, where we have the septic tank and we have the leach field. And to the left of the house, down New Braintree Road, away from the center of town, he does have frontage. And I guess technically, we could require some setback in there. But from a practical sense, I don't think that that is beneficial. And we've heard today from one of the abutters from across the street expressing concerns as to runoff that would be created by having to do this entire new driveway that would take up part of the land there and cutting then into the street as well. And then I think that's, there is no doubt that that back in there, it's swampy. So I, so I think that if it was, you know, I think that that's the finding number one. Finding number two, you know, the hardship. Finding number two, you know, the hardship that it would, you know, if we were to require him to do those other things, I think that it's clear that there'd be, there would be significant expense in doing it some other way, even if that were at all possible. And then finally, a finding of the public good. Again, this, I believe, is a property that's just around the corner from the center of town. And of course, up in the center of town, things are packed in a little bit more tightly. So I don't think that this really changes anything of how that center of town would look. I'd be very very cognizant of the fact that we have a a very small downtown Oakham. And we want to keep it looking like a small-town Oakham. And this doesn't seem to disrupt that in any way. I would, however, in kind of keeping with that, I think that one of the requirements is that I would propose is that there be, if we were to allow it, that it would be conditioned on the fact that there could be no commercial use whatsoever associated with that structure. All right, that's all I got. So Mr. LaRange, any thoughts, questions, comments?
No, I think you covered it all.
Ms. Teszner?
I agree. I know the water problems up in that area and the drainage in the road can be very tricky. And in the winter, it can be very problematic. So I do agree with that.
All right, are we ready to? Any thoughts on that requirement that it be granted, but the no commercial use?
No, I agree with that.
That also.
Okay.
Too small of an area. Too tight.
Yeah, so I, if we're all ready to vote, I would make, I guess, a motion. Do we have anybody?
Make a motion.
Make a motion that the variance be allowed. Again, with the restriction of no commercial use associated with that structure. Can we?
Tony, how do you vote?
Yes, I affirm that motion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Carl?
Yes.
Lucy, yes.
All right. So with that, we will write this up. You'll have a written decision. There is an appeal period for abutters that they're still allowed, even if they weren't here to appeal the decision. And then once that's, appeal period lapses, then he's.
He's free to.
Free to go. All right.
Yep. The appeal period will start once the town clerk gets this letter and stamps it and dates it. Then she will start counting and notify you when the twenty days are up. I will get this done as quickly as I can, but I do have a lot of time to be able to get it done. I actually have sixty days. I don't want to make you wait sixty days, however. So I will get it done as.
It's a little frozen. I think we can wait a few.
And I will get it because it needs specific wording on it. And then we need to probably post it on the town website.
Yeah.
Mr. Langlois, yes, yes. And then you will have your twenty days. And if anybody wants to appeal our decision, you have the same twenty days to appeal our decision. If anybody all of a sudden should show up and say, no, I don't think that should happen. They do have a right to do that, but they have to do it within twenty days. If they go on day twenty-one, it's too late. But we'll move forward from there.
Excellent. Well, I think that's all the business we have for this evening. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much for showing up and coming and giving us your input. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming.